The Board now come to order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Triplet, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Trup, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Florida, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, nineteen present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Saint Louis's very own Father Leo Spezia from Saint Mary Magdalene.
Ladies and gentlemen, may we bow our heads to the God that we love. Almighty God whose divine wisdom embraces our universe, we gather together today not as a group of politicians, but as elected and chosen caretakers of people's lives and property, and solvers of our cities' problems and needs. Help all who are here today to use their wisdom and their courage to protect and serve your people by doing what is right and good, not just what is quick or easy. May our great city always flourish by their deeds of care and their acts of concern. So Lord, give them your blessing as we pray in your name. Amen.
Beautiful prayer this morning. We will dispense with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, move for adoption our courtesy resolution calendar, and take a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, would you like to approach the dais for resolution number fifty-six?
This morning it gives me great pleasure to present this resolution to the Reverend Leo J. Spezia for his dedication to the Saint Louis community and his work to bring together various factions of the community in the South Side area. He's worked particularly, he worked at Saint Francis de Sales early in his career, and worked to help formulate the De Sales Community Housing Corporation. He's most recently been assigned to Saint John's and Saint Mary Magdalene Parish where he served as the president of the Graboy Business Association. He brought together the factions of the Bosnian community, the Christian community, Islamic community, and we've been able to forge some good relationships and move the organization forward. It is with great regret that I've learned that he has been transferred to Eureka, Missouri, to Sacred Heart Parish. Thus, I have decided that he needs to be recognized for his work in hope that he may return at some point and contribute further to the Saint Louis community. I resolve that now we present Father Leo Spezia with his resolution from the City of Saint Louis and the Board of Aldermen.
Thanks, Carol. Thank you all. Great honor to serve you and serve our city. I told Carol as I wrote a letter of resignation the other day for the Graboy Business Association that I'll always be from the city. I'll always come back here to shop, I'll always come back here to do all the things that I need to do, and maybe the Archbishop and his wisdom will put me back here one day too. So, I'll always be from the city. I admire what you do, I respect what you do, so please keep it in good hands, huh? So I can come back and be with you again. God bless you. Thanks, Mrs.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-third, I know you had a couple words for Father.
Yes, actually. Father Leo, you're gonna be missed. He's been really active in the Italian community, which is Joe's ward more so than mine, but since I'm in a lot of the clubs, he's been out. In fact, we're going out to the airport, they put a sign up, "Welcome to Missouri." He's gonna drive all the way in to bless the sign. I do know this, they might be sending him twenty-something miles from here, but he's got a car. We're not saying goodbye, we're just saying it's gonna be a longer ride and don't drink as much between. Anyway, God bless Father Leo, and you know we love you and we're gonna miss you, but we're still gonna see you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I also wanna just add my thanks and also congratulations for a job well done, Father. You will be missed. Eureka, they're picking up a great asset, you know, all of us know. And what I've always admired about you is not just what you do within the church, it's what you do outside of the church in terms of making sure that the whole community is healed. And you've been a champion for rights and stuff for people for many years, and we indeed will miss you. But we're looking forward to either you driving here or us coming there. So if you don't want all of us to show up there, you need to come here to back into business. But thank you. And also to your whole family, you wanna introduce your family so everybody knows who's here with you?
Thanks. I have with me today my sister Jean, and my sister Joan. And you all know Carol Howard, so that's fine. My niece Heather, and my brother-in-law Bob. So, thanks for letting them come and be here today too. You've taken enough time, get on with your work. I'm gonna stay with you, if that's okay with you.
Alderwoman from the six, would you like to approach the dais for resolution number fifty-seven?
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the Board. It's my pleasure to read this resolution and present it in honor of U.S. Deputy Marshal John Perry. Whereas John Perry was born on May the twenty-first, nineteen sixty-two, in Glen Ellen, Illinois, where he graduated from Glenbird West High School. And Deputy John Perry earned a bachelor's degree in geology in nineteen eighty-four from the Southern Illinois University at Edwardsville. And whereas, prior to becoming marshal, Deputy Perry worked in Madison County probation for sixteen years. And whereas, he graduated from the U.S. Marshals Academy in two thousand and one and worked for ten years prior to his death, first in Washington, D.C., and then in July two thousand and five, he began his service here in Saint Louis. And whereas, while in Washington, D.C., he volunteered at the Call Center for America's Most Wanted. Deputy Perry served as a team leader on the Fugitive Task Force and as a firearms instructor for the U.S. Marshals of the Eastern District of Missouri. And whereas, he was well-known for his sense of humor, for his role as a mentor to other marshals, and for his ability to diffuse tense situations. And whereas, Deputy Perry lost his life in the line of duty on March the eighth, two thousand and eleven. And true to his generous spirit, he had registered as an organ donor. And here is where the good part comes in. Deputy Perry was able to save the lives of five people by the donation of his heart, lungs, liver, pancreas, and kidneys, as well as skin and bone tissue. The skin and bone grafts may have helped as many as one hundred people. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Saint Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize and honor the many contributions of U.S. Deputy Marshal John Perry to the Saint Louis community, and we further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. So with that, what I would like to do is to provide this resolution to Deputy Marshal John Perry's wife in honor of his service and contribution to our community.
Thank you all so very much for this honor. John has received many, many honors since his death for being a marshal, but none yet so far for being an organ donor. And that's what made him the man that he was, and the man that we so truly miss. I think that he would have been very pleased to have known how many people he was able to help with his organ donation. There are five people out there whose families have not had to endure the last fifteen months that I've had to endure, and my friends who have stood by me have had to endure. We miss him every single day. My friends and I are doing everything that we can to talk about organ donation and to talk about what John gave, and to honor him by spreading the word. And something like this, honoring him as being an organ donor will help immensely. I've thought many times the last fifteen months that maybe I'm not really doing any good getting out there and telling John's story, and maybe it's not going to help. But two weeks ago, tragedy struck the marshal service again. One very good friend of his lost his eleven-month-old son. And when Mike called to tell me that Louis had died, he told me that because of John being an organ donor, and because of the work that we've been doing in John's memory, Louis was an organ donor. Now there's a two-year-old boy out in California that's able to see for the first time. I think John would be very, very proud, and I thank you again for this honor.
On behalf of the, I know my family and friends and others around this nation and around the city who cannot be here today, I wanna, with as much thanks as I can give in my heart, I thank you, John, for all that you've done for our community and for what you've done for this United States of America. The resolution that you hold in your hand, although it's but a piece of paper, is the highest honor that this board has to give. And what it does is that it cements in time some of John's many contributions. And a hundred, two hundred years from now, people will be able to go back and research the records of the City of Saint Louis, and they'll find Deputy Marshal Perry's name amongst those records. And they'll know that he's passed his way and he's given, he had given so much to the fabric of our communities for, so again, thanks. Thanks for everything that your family's done. Alderman from the twentieth.
Mr. President, members of the board, with the consent, with the consent of the sponsor, if it's possible that we do this in bank, I would request move that we do it in bank.
Move about Alderman from the twentieth, second about Alderwoman from the fifteenth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Resolution number fifty-seven in bank.
Mrs. Perry.
Mrs. Perry? Could you, Pam?
That's okay, it's fine for her to be there.
Let's come back up for a minute.
It's okay to be there. I mean, it pains, it pains me greatly actually to stand. I did not realize that there was going to be a motion or a resolution this morning. On March eighth, two thousand and eleven, it was truly a very sad day in our city. And I, at the time, we were having a primary election. I didn't know exactly what was going on. We had a lot of helicopters by Marquette Park on Osage. Happens to be an area that I represent, and your husband was doing something that we obviously need to do to protect and defend our city from the craziness that happens everywhere. Just this year, I sent out a little note to everybody to remind them, and I pray for him and for the great things that he's done for us and what he continues to do interceding for us. But I just want you to know that we have not forgotten him, and obviously he did even more in terms of sharing than I ever recognized. So, I thank you, and I, I don't know what to say other than that except the thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Further discussion? Thanks again. I think they're gonna, if you guys would come back up for a quick photo. We'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction, round and guess, any introduction, round and guess. Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I have a special guest today with me, and she's special to me because she's with the Epilepsy Foundation, and they have their season-day walk, I mean run, I'll be running, next Saturday, the sixteenth. And I can honestly say, I'm very proud to say that because my son Connor had his first seizure in two thousand and three, but he's been seizure-free for three years, so I'm very close to the Epilepsy Foundation for what they do. And I would like to introduce Darla Templeton, who's from the Epilepsy Foundation.
Alderman from the eighth.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. Today my special guest is a fellow who has sat for CPA exam and is in law, law school at this point in time, but even though he lives here in the City of Saint Louis, I would strongly encourage him to find a real job and not follow in my footsteps. But he's the son of one of my best friends from grade school. You remember his father, Mr. Everett Lewis, here today.
Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Good morning, Mr. President. My special guest this morning, I would like to have Abram Pruitt. He's the president of the Black Firefighters Association, as well as Demetrius Alfred of Local Seventy-three of the firefighters, and also I saw the former alderman and comptroller, Vervis Jones.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest this morning, Mr. Richard Zot. He is the new chief Department of Public Safety gentleman from Metro, chief of public safety.
Alderman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I would like to introduce my special guest today, Rachel Smith from Circuit Attorney's Office, and Daniel Gross Velt from Vail Pariser University. He's gonna be an intern this summer, he lives in Compton Heights. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, I'd like to have from the Communication Workers of America, Steve Sprack, who's hanging out in the corner, as my special guest.
Alderwoman from the sixth.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I would like to have as my special honor guest, Mr. Richard Camp, and the board members of Quick Fix Pet Clinic. Today is a very special day with the opening of Quick Fix Pet Clinic located at twelve eighteen South Jefferson. Quick Fix offers a low-cost spay and neuter service for dogs and cats. This is a state-of-the-art surgery center that has been made possible by the generous support of Carroll House Furniture Store, Ross and Perina, and PetSmart Charities. Quick Fix Pet Clinic is here today. They provided breakfast for all the members of the Board of Aldermen. They really need our support to make sure that we contact and let our constituents know that this is a low-cost and affordable service to help eliminate the stray issue here in our city. So thank you.
All right, the alderman from the thirteenth is recognized on the approval of minutes.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I move for approval of the minutes of the May twenty-fifth meeting.
All in favor, say aye. By your vote, you've approved the minutes of the May twenty-fifth meeting. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes.
Board bills for perfection, informal calendar, does anyone wanna take any bills off the informal calendar? Hearing none, we will move to first reading of board bills.
Board Bill eighty-six, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estiment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute a professional service agreement for fleet vehicles, a special equipment maintenance repair service at Lambert Airport containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estiment and Apportement, ratifying and adopting the actions of the mayor and the comptroller, the grant agreement for a project number for a maximum federal obligation of twelve million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars for the reimbursement of direct costs associated with the rehabilitation of runway twelve R, thirty L, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Carter, and ordinance adopting the Uniform Plumbing Code, two thousand and nine edition, as the plumbing code of the city containing a penalty clause, a savings clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Behringer, and ordinance recommended by the Board of, by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in the western, east-west alley in City Block sixty-one ninety, as bounded by Chippewa, Donovan, and Lansdowne. Board Bill ninety, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel in an irregular portion of Clayton, abutting City Block fifty-four twenty-nine, and seventy thirty-six Clayton between Skinker and Clayton Road. Board Bill ninety-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet, and ordinance establishing a stop site for all southbound traffic traveling on South Campton at Halliday, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill ninety-two, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and ordinance pertaining to pedestrian access to buildings, establishing regulations for pedestrian access that primarily serves users of subject property and for which dedication of public rights, public access rights is not required. Board Bill ninety-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance amending ordinance six eight eight seven four, pertaining to issuance and delivery of tax increment revenue notes for Grand Center redevelopment project containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill ninety-four, sponsored by President Reed and Alderwoman Cruzen, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportement, authorizing a supplemental appropriation, amending ordinance six eight eight two, commonly referred to as the City of Saint Louis Annual Operating Plan for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, appropriating and setting apart projected access general fund revenues to address certain expenditures in the general fund for the current fiscal year in the amount of three million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill ninety-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Behringer, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for sixty-nine twenty-eight through sixty-nine seventy, sixty-nine eleven through sixty-nine seventy-three Chippewa, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill ninety-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, and ordinance establishing a stop site for all eastbound and westbound traffic, traveling on North Thirteenth Street at Clinton Street and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill ninety-seven, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance enacting a curfew for Marie Fowler Park and Philip J. Luser Park, containing an exception for persons holding permits and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second, of our first readings.
Reference to committee of board bills?
To the Housing Committee, board bills ninety-three and ninety-five, to the Public Safety Committee, board bills eighty-eight and ninety-two, to the Transportation Committee, board bills eighty-six and eighty-seven, to the Ways and Means Committee, board bill ninety-four, to the Streets Committee, board bills eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, and ninety-six, and to the Parks Committee, board bill ninety-seven. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported of the Housing Committee, board bill number nine, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from C, multiple-family dwelling district, and G, local fam, local commercial and office district, to the F, neighborhood commercial district only, in City Block fifty-two seventeen, for thirty-six seventeen Glasgow, and twenty-nine-hundred through fifty natural bridge, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill seventeen, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from D, multiple-family dwelling district, to the F, neighborhood commercial district, in City Block six twenty-eight, for properties on North Fourteenth Street and North Thirteenth Street, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from A, single-family dwelling district, and F, neighborhood commercial district, to the F, neighborhood commercial district only, in City Block five one zero zero, for property at seventy-two oh one through oh three Piccadilly, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill thirty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance amending ordinance six six four nine four, and six six seven five two, and six seven eight seven nine, authorizing the execution of a third amendment to the redevelopment agreement binding between the city and Adler, containing a severability clause. Board Bill forty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from F, neighborhood commercial district, to the C, multiple-family dwelling district, in City Block nineteen seventy-one, for property on twenty-nine hundred through oh eight Indiana, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill forty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from K, unrestricted district, and both K, unrestricted district, and J, industrial district, to the J, industrial district only, in City Block thirty-four forty-eight, thirty-two fifty-nine, and thirty-two sixty-six, for properties on east, on three sixteen East Catlin, eighty-seven eighteen South Broadway, and four sixteen East Catlin, containing an emergency clause. Following board bill was reported out of the Public Safety Committee, board bill eleven, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, and ordinance pertaining to fireman's retirement system, repealing Section Six of ordinance four nine six two three, and enacting in lieu thereof a new section pertaining to the jurisdiction and authority of the trustees of the fireman's retirement system containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
We will dispense with items fourteen through sixteen. Third reading consent calendar.
Board bills fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
The alderman from the thirteenth is recognized on the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Board of Aldermen. I move for third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Seconded by the alderman from the eleventh, twelfth, sorry, put you in the wrong board. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Trup, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Triplet, Alderwoman Young.
Aye.
Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderman Wessels.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Florida.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Cruson.
Aye.
President Reed, Alderman Troop, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Orkman, Alderman French. 24 aye votes.
By your vote, you've sustained.
24.
Okay, by your vote, you've sustained the motion of the Alderman from the 13th. Report of the enrollment committee.
Board bills 14, 15, and 16.
We will dispense with item number 20. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 58, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplett. The Board of Aldermen recognizes the Fox Park application for the Land and Water Conservation Fund LWCF grant round fiscal year 2012.
Alderman from the 6th.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I move for unanimous consent of Resolution 58.
Hearing no objection, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This is just an opportunity for the 6th Ward to apply for a grant that will help Fox Park who's in much need of repair and revitalization. And I renew my motion.
Second?
Second.
Second by Alderman from the 23rd. All in favor of passage of Resolution 58, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By your vote, you have approved Resolution 58.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
We will dispense with items 22, 23. Announcements?
Tuesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting, 9:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the 3rd.
Streets will meet Thursday at 11:00 o'clock. Any Alderman that has a bill in the Streets Committee shall notify the clerk so it can be advertised. The meeting will begin at 11:00 o'clock in the Leisure Room.
Thank you. Alderman from the 18th.
Yes, Madam Vice President, members of the boards, I'd like to call a public, a Transportation and Commerce Committee meeting for Thursday at 1:00 p.m.
Thank you. Alderman from the 27th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Vice, Vice Chair, Vice President, I apologize for that. I will be calling a Public Safety Committee meeting Tuesday, June 12th, at 11:00 a.m.
11:00 a.m.?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Oh, Alderwoman from the 16th.
Yes, I would like to announce that tomorrow, June 9th, is the St. Gabriel's picnic. And I would like to invite everyone down there to enjoy time and spend money and promote St. Gabriel's. And I'd like to also do a shout-out to my husband. Today is our 21st wedding anniversary. Thank you.
Congratulations. Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This week, I think we had a couple birthdays down here. Alderman Carter and I think today, well, his was Tuesday maybe. And today is the Alderwoman from the 6th birthday. So I'm wishing both a happy birthday.
Birthdays are good. Any other announcements? Alderman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ladies and gentlemen, this Sunday, the 10th of June, on the hill will be the annual St. Louis J.C.'s Soapbox Derby. It starts around 9:00 in the morning. We'll run to around 5:00 in the evening. Come by and see these kids. The winners will be going on to Ohio for the championships. There we'll have a antique and hot rod car show also. This will take place at Shaw School at the corner of Mackland and Botanical. Thank you. See you there. They will also have adult beverages, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, and it's good to see you here.
Good to be seen. Thank you.
That's right. Alderman, Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, I'd like to give you a couple announcements. The first one is, we'd like to congratulate and ask you to drop by Dr. Carolyn Pryor's new office in downtown St. Louis today. She's having an open house from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at 916 Olive. I really admire her because she really takes time to give back in the community, works with us on a lot of fundraisers and other things, and it's just wonderful to have her now in downtown St. Louis. I'd also like to recognize that we will have an open house next Tuesday at the Metropolitan Lofts Apartments. That's on the corner of Grand and Olive, the old Walgreens building. So if you'd like to come and look at those between 5:00 and 7:00, please come by. That's next Tuesday, which is June 12th. Also, we have a fundraiser that all of us should support next Wednesday, June 13th. It's the Rolling for Backstoppers fundraiser and the Ethical Society of Police, FIRE, all of those guys who are great skaters. And I tell you, I'm not anymore, but I like to go and watch them. But they, they have an annual every year and it's like a two or three-day fundraiser. But the skate part of it is the big one. June 13th, 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. at Skate King at 6100 Natural Bridge. Tickets are only $10. And as you know, it supports those that we have lost and are injured. And I want you to make sure that you all come out and support them. Thank you.
Any further announcements? The Alderman from the 13th is recognized on excused Alderman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to excuse the Alderman from the first, second, and fourth wards. Pardon, I'm sorry. I would amend that to the second and fourth wards due to necessary absence.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 13th that we excuse those Aldermen and seconded by the Alderman from the 11th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by your vote, you have excused those Aldermen. The Alderman from the 13th is again recognized on the adjournment motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, 10:00 a.m., June 15th.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 13th and seconded by the Alderman from the 22nd. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll see you next week.